Harley, can you see?
Is she, is she good? Oh, sorry. Okay, welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the study session on Monday, May 22nd. We always start with public forum, and I will read the rules so everyone's aware. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names and addresses appear on the sign-up sheet at the time the meeting is called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes, 15 total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board.
Up to five speakers shall be provided.
Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Tonight, we have one open forum speaker, and that is Jonathan Painter, speaking on policy.
Thank you so very much for being inclusive today because I am coming right from the field, and so I hope you'll pardon my wardrobe selection. Things weren't exactly going as planned, and so I appreciate you making accommodations for me. So I'm here to speak on policy 203, and I know this is not necessarily a new thing, but I know many of you on the board personally, and I've had discussions with you regarding just how important it is that we don't get all isolated into this one faction or another because ultimately, the community is a pretty diverse bunch of people. And, I mean, you're here to represent them all. So, my thought is, and even some of you board members at times, it probably felt like you've been under pressure from other board members and other cliques and things. So, I would like to encourage you guys to think about being as inclusive as the law will allow in making sure that people aren't excluded from committees. Because it's just important. I think, one, in the, in the, in the, in the ambiance of transparency, I guess. You know, just at least being able to be present and, and understand the way that different perspectives are being communicated and viewed and discussed and just kind of having an idea of how to approach any kind of issue. I think it's important, and nobody really wants to feel like they're on the outside. And so, you know, with whatever you are considering here, I would just like to ask that you take that into consideration. And I didn't come here because this was my favorite thing to do in this wardrobe. So I hope you understand how serious I think that this is. So, anyway, thank you so very much for your time, and again, for your accommodation because I know that you did make accommodation for me, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our purpose and agenda. Dr. Thomas will speak to that.
Thank you. So this evening, we have a variety of topics. Again, our opportunity as a work session or a study session is to be more informal, to have greater dialogue and get perspectives on the board and general working direction from the board. Tonight, we will be going through our preliminary budget. The session, at least our portion of the session, has concluded. With the things going forward, we'll be able to update you on that, as well as where we have updated our budget to reflect much of the conversation that we've been having with you all over the past several months. We will have a topic of reviewing our facility's usage fees for permitting requests, our long-term facilities maintenance for Southwest Metro, an allocation report, so we'll have some pieces there that we'll walk you through. We will have the board, the draft board committee charters for your guidance tonight. We'll be bringing those back to you in June for a final vote, so that come July 1, they will take effect, so we can really begin actively going into that new structure. And then, we have a couple of board-centered policies that you all will be discussing later on this evening. And then, we also have a closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, that's just, that's it for the, for the work session. Sorry, I'm just covering that.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Yeah.
And when we look at our board working documents that we work from annually, the highlighted items are the monthly enrollment report and our superintendent annual review, which will be going on in closed session. There will be a summary provided to the public at our next board meeting. We'll jump right into budgets. Our 2324 review with Director Fredrickson. Obviously, no board actions requested, but this report only, and we've got a lot of information to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cosby, members of the board, Superintendent Thomas. I've got several documents for you to review tonight. I think it probably is easiest to start with the revenue detail. We included some of the additional legislation that's been passed. So on that, the yellow highlighted on the document are the new funding sources. We did get 4% on the formula allowance, so that's reflective in on the first line of the document. The English learner, we currently in state law is $704 per eligible English learner student. They had been talking about raising it to $1,000, and what got passed was actually $1,228 per English learner student. So that gave us a little bit of additional revenue. It wasn't a huge dollar amount, but it is dollars that we can put towards our English learner department. We also got American Indian education aid. We hadn't included that in the budget previously, and it's not a huge amount of money. It's $45,276, but it's going to do some fantastic things for our American Indian students in the district. And then, the special ed cross-subsidy aid reduction. I think the last meeting we had, I was estimating that at about $3.1 million. It actually came in at $2,958,654. The House had proposed 47.8% reduction of cross-subsidy aid, and the House was at 40, so they settled on 44. So we've had kind of in the middle. And then, there was also three new funding sources that I hadn't included in previous documents, and that's the student support personnel aid, $114,000, the school library aid of $154,000, and then, the last one was an allocation to supply menstrual products and then have two doses of Narcan in every district. Those were new funding sources. We need to keep in mind that those all came with expenses with them, so it's not, you don't have a lot of flexibility, we don't have any flexibility at how you're going to spend those dollars because they're very detailed in the legislation. So as we went through all of those changes, our revenue bottom line is we're anticipating $115.1 million in revenue for next year. Any questions on that?
Can you elaborate on the library aid? What mandates are required for that? I tried to, I apologize, I tried to look it up and I couldn't find it in the bill exactly that it was.
The allowable uses for that are, I list five things. The salaries and benefits of a school library media specialist, electronic computer and audiovisual equipment, information technology, infrastructure, and digital tools, electronic and material resources, and furniture equipment and supplies.
That one's a little bit more clear-cut. There's a lot in that omnibus bill that is yet to be interpreted. So just know that we're working through a variety of our professional associations to understand, you know, like, for example, the discipline piece is really gray right now. Roger Arneson did just issue his statement of interpretation. He seems to carry a lot of weight with that, so I think we're going to be getting better clarity with a lot of these other pieces of legislation. But some of them are pretty prescriptive like this, but most things are fairly gray right now. So, more to come as we kind of peel all that back.
Questions on revenue? The next one, something, um, to me?
Yes?
Oh.
To me.
I have a question. On the Narcan, you said two doses. Is that something that's pretty standard for like a district our size to have those many doses? That, and I realize this might not be a question for you, but maybe for the other, I was just curious.
So, Director Olsted, this is Michael. Just, there is really no standard because this is new for, for our district, or for districts across the state of Minnesota, to have legislative allocations of Narcan. So, I guess we really can't say, are we above or below? But what I, I will definitely have Kate look into that to see what other districts are getting based upon similar sizes, et cetera, just to see where we might fall.
And that was two-
It was just a curiosity question, thank you.
And it's two, two doses in the district, total?
Yeah, we, it, the requirement just says requires a school district to maintain two doses of nasal, L-Loxone available on-site.
Thank you.
So I don't know that we know if that's for building or school district. So we'll have to get that clarified, too.
Tammy, I have one other question. The federal funding for meals, where would that be in the budget?
The federal funding for meals is in Fund II, so I've just been addressing Fund I over the budget. The next one, we look at the sheet titled School Department. It has, broken out by the first section is the budgets that are for the schools and then the budgets for the departments. And then, it compares what we currently have for allocations for this year with what we have for next year. And I've broken it out by funding sources. So it has the general fund, then Q Comp, Achievement and Integration, Gifted and Talented. It just kind of lists all of the different funding sources that we have. See that the schools for this current year, we've allocated $85.5 million, and next year it'll be 89, almost 89.1 million, or a 4.9% increase. And then, the departments, the funding sources, again, broken out. Current year, we have $26.5 million. Next year, we're proposing $27.5 million, which is a 3.72% increase. So we're projecting expenses of $116.5 million, which is about a 4.01% increase over what we currently have this year. And again, this is just kind of breaking it down by the different funding sources that correlate to the revenue that you saw in the previous sheet.
But Tammy, I have a question. When you say different funding sources, what is the actual allocation per year, first of all? So we have what's in 2024, as far as state allocation to us in 2025, what is the difference for 2025, 2026? Next year will be in 20, 20, yeah, 2020? This year's 20, going into 2023, 2024, and next year's 2024 to 2025, right?
Nope.
The other way around, I'm sorry.
Currently, it's 22, 23.
That's right.
And next year will be 23, 24.
24, 25, okay. So, in 24, 25, did you just say you're projecting that, or in the coming year? I got a little confused.
We will be projecting that as we move forward with the year. We'll do a kind of a five-year projection this fall, as we see what kind of enrollment we're going to get in September.
Is there a difference between what is going to be funded from the state the next fiscal year that's included in that?
Yes, the biggest difference is the 24, 25 general fund formula is increased by 2%. Well, next year, it's 4%, and then the year after, it'll be 2%. And they did not tie that to inflation like the House had suggested.
And we're at, for expenses, we're at, I think it's a 6% overall or an 8% overall inflation rate with expenses?
Yeah, it's, the transportation is about 6%, utilities are looking like about 8%.
What about general supplies and all that?
They're probably, depending on, obviously, what kind of supplies we get, where our expenditures we have, it could be anywhere from 2% to 6%, just depending on what we end up having to purchase.
Okay. As far as the expenses go, do you see that eating into our fund balance in, in the next 2023, 2024, I mean, 20, whatever the next year is?
Hopefully not. I mean, we've built into next year's budget some plans to increase enrollment, and if those work, then conceivably we'll have increase in enrollment, which will then increase our revenue. And we also have all of our contracts except for teachers settled for next year and the year after. So we should be fairly close in our revenues. I don't anticipate having to use a lot of fund balance in future years, but again, I don't know what inflation's going to look like, especially given that we're hitting our debt ceiling, and no one's going to happen with what the federal government's going to end up doing by the end of the week. The next one that we can look at is the budget presentation material. We look at the total. This is a sheet that you're used to seeing. This is how the budget is usually presented. It has, you know, the estimated fund balances, it shows the estimated revenues, the estimated expenditures, and then the estimated fund balance at the end of June 24. So this is just kind of, again, putting it in a different format. We're anticipating $115.1 million in revenue, $116.5 million in expenses, which, and we're asking to use 1 point, almost 1.5 million in fund balance to, in order to pay for all of the expenses, the $116.05. And then, you also see the food service, the community, and the debt service. All of the other funds are also on this sheet. And then, the budget presentation material by site. We just took the way that you usually presented the budget and kind of broke it down. I don't, I personally don't feel like the, the original way that we were doing it gives you a lot of detail. It just kind of gives you, here's a total revenue, here's a total expenses. So we wanted to show you what the actual expenses and revenue looks like broken out by the funding sources, by schools and departments, so you can actually see where we're investing our dollars in each of the funding categories. The state special education one, the very first one on the sheet, the district-wide, we get about $14 million, not including the cross-subsidy aid, and we're spending about $19.5 million. We put the cross-subsidy aid in the district-wide general fund just because it's intended to kind of relieve the general fund, but we're spending it on special education, just given the fact that we're going to be spending $19.5 million on special education versus a revenue of $14 million. And then, that 2.9 million in the cross-subsidy reduction aid will also apply towards that. We also increased the special ed expenses for next year. We're, we're seeing an increase in the special ed students and the severity of the students that we're getting. We did increase the amount of money that we're spending on special education next year. So are there questions on those two documents?
You mind, I've got a few questions, and maybe I've broken down on another document, but I've gotten a few questions about the assigned fund balance and what's in there and the carryover from year to year. Do you mind walking through that a little bit?
Yep, we can look at that one. There is-
In the total. But there's a breakdown. I think you did a more in-depth breakdown.
Yep. On the fund balance summary, that shows you for next year, for the fiscal year 24, our, we're estimating our fund balance ending this year, so June 30th, another month, be about $21.7 million. And then, in order to show, not necessarily a balanced budget, but we're asking to use a plan, use a fund balance of $1.4 million for next year to cover all of the expenses that we're asking. That would mean that we would end next year, June 30th of 24, with $20.2 million in fund balance. And then, I broke it out, there's 337 in non-spendable, 1.6 million of restricted, 3.2 million in assigned, and then 15.1 million in unassigned, which means that the end of June 30th of 24, we would have a fund balance of $20.2 million of, combined of the all four of those categories. Which, if you just look at the assigned and unassigned, which is what our board policy says, it would be about 15.7%. If you just separate out the unassigned and the assigned, our unassigned is 12.99, which is right at the high end of the board policy. And then, the assigned is 2.71%. And then, I did a comparison over the last three years for each of those categories. Join, the last column is what we're anticipating the fiscal 24, so June 30th of 2024, what the fund balance would look like. With that, there's another document that has the assigned fund balance. And if we look at that one, we have five categories for our assigned fund balance. We've assigned 1.7 million for what we call cash flow, and that's, we never know what the state is going to end up doing, or if there are things that happen at the legislature or with the state or federal government. So we always want to have, I know, this is our, sort of a risk mitigation, in case we don't get revenue for whatever reason. We wouldn't have to do short-term borrowing, so we're keeping 1.7 million just as assigned for cash flow in case anything comes up. Then, we also have $500,000 for what we call class size reduction, and that's if, in fact, we do get more students in September than we had anticipated, then we don't have to kind of reconfigure our budget. We can immediately hire teachers in order to accommodate those new kids that come in. So we set aside $500,000 for that. Then, the planned use of the budget is the 1.4 million, so we're asking to use that. And then, we have assigned for innovative programs, because every year, there's going to always be something that comes up. There's some emergent need that we hadn't planned for. So, again, to mitigate the risk, we have $370,000 set aside in the assigned fund balance for that. And then, $538,000 is site carryover, so schools that do fundraiser generate revenue at their schools. We don't want to spend it on other things, so we keep that for the schools.
Can we have a question?
Uh huh.
Did we already add in or allocate dollars for the potential new science curriculum? I know we just went through a math curriculum. Is that included in here, or is that in one of the fund balances here?
If we decide to do the science, there is some curriculum money set aside. I think if we do a full-blown science adoption, then we would have to look at fund balance dollars to do that. We did set aside enough for to cover the math adoption.
Dr. Edwards, just correct me if I'm wrong, on that science curriculum, we have that parked in your budget. The sci, that-
That would be coming out of the typical annual-
Right, in our departmental budget, separate from this unique piece.
And Tammy, if you, again, some of you may be getting asked, kind of, what's the difference between assigned fund balance versus restricted funds? If you could maybe just walk through the protocols and the parameters around that, and at the end of the year, if what we've put into the assigned fund balance isn't spent, does that roll over into the general fund? Can we reassign items for the following fiscal year, so if you could maybe just speak to that a little bit, too?
Sure. The other document that you pull up is your, the restricted fund balance. These are things that are identified in, in state statute. It specifically says that if you do not spend these dollars in the year that you were allocated the dollars, you have to put it in restricted fund balance, and it can only be used for that purpose again in the future. We try not to have a lot of dollars left over in restricted fund balance, because really, when the legislature or the state gives us dollars, the intent is they're giving you revenue to serve this year's kids. So we try to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the current year kids, because that's what the dollars are for. And then, you get additional, or you get another allocation the following year for next year's students. So, it's one of the reasons why they want to keep it as very restricted, which has always been it on those. And you can see there, the student activities, the area learning center, staff development, the third-party billing, learning and development, the gifted and talented, basic skills, that's the compensatory education revenue, achievement and integration, safe schools, long-term facilities maintenance, and then operating capital. And of those, you can see some of them are zero, because we're planning on spending the current fund balance for those categories, like the safe schools. We're going to get $345,000, we're anticipating spending 45, $345,000. At the end of the year, the restricted fund balance, you really can't do anything, you can't change how you're going to spend those dollars, because again, it's in statute. The assigned fund balance is, is kind of up to the district. If, you know, if we decide we're not worried about cash flow, we could certainly reassign those dollars or move them to unassigned. But again, these, these dollars, we're putting aside as a risk mitigation, kind of protection, but we can certainly look at reassigning them as something else or moving them to unassigned fund balance.
Tammy, I have a question. I know you haven't gotten to this piece yet, but when you do the preliminary budget expenses and you have the 2023, 2022 to 23 versus the 23, 24, and the overall percentage increase, the assigned fund balances, particularly for those that are restricted, like safe schools, doesn't, doesn't marry up with that restricted number? And I was just wondering if, when you get to that point, if you could explain that? There's a couple of others here, too. I mean, it made sense when I heard it the first time, but I'm not quite sure, I still get a lot of questions on that. I'm not quite sure everyone gets that. Difference between what you're showing on your budget expenses, your preliminary versus the other numbers, let's say the, in safe schools, for instance, on that restricted fund, you have a number of $345,341. And then, on the safe schools, on the preliminary budget expenses, you have $400,000, and then and then two oh six, seven twenty-five on the fiscal year twenty-four preliminary expenses.
Yes, so there are, there are some categories where we choose to invest general fund revenue to kind of supplement some of the decisions that are made for, like for safe schools. If we want to invest in something that's more than what we got for revenue for those safe schools, we can take general fund money and put it towards that expense. So there are a few of those categories where we've identified a specific need, specifically around the safe schools, that isn't going to cover, the three hundred and forty-five thousand is not enough to cover it. Gifted and talented is another one, we spend more than the three hundred and thirty-six thousand, the three hundred and thirty-three thousand that we get as state aid. So we just invest some of that unassigned dollars to cover the expenses that we know we're going to reflect what we're actually going to spend. Are there any questions on those? And then the last document is the new investments. We, the, the new investments that we had given you last time, I think, had a projection of what we were going to spend for this current year, and then a projected increase of what salaries and vacant positions would look like. And since then, we've had enough time to actually, you have, as a board, approved some of those final contract negotiation agreements. So we've been able to actually input into our Skyward system, the actual salaries for the people, so it's no longer just a guess of how much it's going to look like, because we actually have real numbers. And then as we were going through there, worked with human resources, and the list that they had of some of those positions were actually kind of duplicated in the budget. So for instance, if they had a retirement or a resignation, then HR would list another position so they could get posted. And we assumed that that meant we needed budget for it, when actually, we didn't, because it already had a budget for the person resigning. So since then, Emily and I have kind of gone through a process planning session, you will. We're going to be assigning actual position numbers to every position in the district so that they all have a unique number. So right now, when we pull a report, it'll say teacher math, and then it just lists a bunch of math teachers. So we don't know necessarily if each one has a budget attached to it, if it's somebody leaving or coming. So we're just going to have a, just kind of a tightened-up process and assign a position number to every position in the district. I think it'll be a little easier to kind of track those as we move forward.
Tammy, when you're looking at those open positions, can you help me understand, of the open positions, how many are budgeted for within this, the budget? Like, is it fifty percent or a hundred percent? Knowing that you're not going to probably fill all those open positions, how many, what percentage of them are budgeted for within the budget?
We kept, I think it was twenty-five vacant positions in the, built into the budget, which I think is more than enough to cover what we're anticipating.
Those are budgeted vacancies?
So on the new investments page, that, you'll see that hundred and sixteen point five million, that includes all of the salary increases for our approved bargaining unit contracts. And then all of these investments, we were able to put into that hundred and sixteen point five million, again, because there were some duplicate vacant positions, and some of those that we had as investments for the JUC Fair Recruitment, we were able to slot into some of those vacancies. So I think in the other, the document that you saw last time, we had anticipated four point two million, it's actually about a million nine, after everything is said and done. So the hundred and sixteen million, again, will include basically the hundred and eleven million that we spent this year, plus these investments of two point nine million, and then all of the new salaries of about one point eight million, one point nine million. And that's how we got to the hundred and sixteen point five million in expenses. You'll note on the new investment sheet, there are, towards the bottom, there's five that I've highlighted in yellow. Those are actual non-salary expenses that we anticipate having, and those are the items that we're asking to take out of the planned use of fund balance. They'll be one-time use of dollars. And then moving forward, we'll have those either planned for in the budget or one-time expenses.
Are the twenty-five vacant positions still reflected in the fund balance, or are they?
No, they're in the hundred and sixteen point five.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that. All right. And then the difference in spend, which you're showing are current plus our increase in expenses versus revenue, that is, that can be, this is included on that?
Correct.
And that comes out? Just make sure. Okay.
Tammy, I have a question. So I appreciate you detailing that out, how it adds up. But what I'm questioning is on the second page, and what I'm wondering, where does the one point seven million that's listed on the right-hand side? Does that, how does that fit into the hundred and sixteen million? Or are you saying that would be in addition, that would come on a fund balance? Of course, is that my understanding?
That's the fund balance.
As a sub total of the yellow highlighted fund balance item.
So the total allocations would be one hundred and sixteen million plus one hundred, one point, one point eight million? Correct?
Actually, no, because you see on the other funding in that right-hand column, there's four cultural liaisons that are actually coming out of achievement and integration. And then there's some English learner teachers that are actually coming out of Title III and some of that English learner aid. So we don't need to ask for that to come out of fund balance. So it would just be those five items. And we got the one point four million, one point five million that we're asking out of fund balance.
But is that included in the hundred and sixteen million?
Yes.
And one thing I note, I noted on here is that that, you know, obviously, the transportation contract increase is not a one-time spend, but next year would be in the transportation budget.
Correct. That's what we're anticipating. That was all of the documents I had. Those questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you talk about the process you and Emily are working on with, you know, learning or assigning a number or whatever to all of the positions, is that going to be teachers and other staff as well? And so with that information, as you come, as you assign those numbers, what will, what is the end result? Like, will we get a monthly report? Or how, how do you envision that reporting detail? Because I just emailed today about it, and I know you responded with a, you know, a previous response, and I guess it's just my lack of understanding on, I understand that Skyward doesn't allow certain functions, but it's hard for me to understand why it's challenging to get a monthly detailed report for HR, who's, you know, what are the numbers in each building? Because you have to have some of that information as far as to, for putting at, you know, job listings and all of that stuff. So if you could just help me understand, because I don't want to keep asking for the same thing, and yeah, if you could just expand on that. Because the, because our, our budget is mainly our positions. So having, having, if I had that information, that I can see how that ebbs and flows and what's going on, I think it would give us all a greater picture of the needs.
So currently, right now, our, our Skyward system is an old version. It's a WebPAC version that has two different sides of it that don't speak to each other. So a lot of the processes are very manual between the two. And so with the ins and the outs of staffing, whether that's hiring, leaves, all the, the turnover, all that, that stuff that occurs, adding new positions, additional staffing requests, those are all manual processes that we go through in HR and payroll and the business office to do cross-references on, and it's very time-consuming, especially what we have to do, because we don't have a software that can do it for us currently right now. So that's what we're hoping to get to with, when we upgrade to the new Skyward. We're hoping to have a better position control functionality of it, so that we can just see a snapshot of where are we at? Where is our ins and outs? Is this position empty because of a leave? Is it empty because of resignation? Is it empty because it's a new position? Right now, we're tracking all of that individually on data sheets and our internal spreadsheets between all of the departments, and trying to track all of that moving pieces in a very manual process right now. So getting those reports is very time-consuming, because we don't have the resources available to us at this moment. But this, hopefully, we're very optimistic that the new Skyward is going to give us significantly better tools to do that, because that would significantly help all of us with trying to figure out this quick snapshot, instead of us having to do all this manual work to track all of the moving pieces.
Can you share, when you do post a listing, or say there's a vacant, someone leaves, resignation, terminate, whatever it may be, what is the process for a building to share that information with senior leadership so that you can post the position? What does it, can you walk me through that, how that looks?
So for a resignation, a staff member sends that to their supervisor in human resources. If they don't include human resources, they board it on to us. We then go in our, our manual spreadsheets that we use to track all of the approved FTEs, and then there's a spreadsheet that's used to update all the different departments as well. And then we enter it into our side of the system, and payroll enters it into their side of the system. From there, then we use those spreadsheets that we have for the tracking to approve a posting. All the postings have to be approved by HR specials before they go live, and that's for us to make sure it's, it's an approved posting. Like, there's a resignation that we can point to for that, or there's a leave we can point to, or we've gotten the additional staffing request approved by the board. Then we go to those spreadsheets that we have, that we track internally, to make sure, and then we put those on those data sheets. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but for the new hire data sheets, it says like why they're hired. It says like a resignation or a new posting. That's when we put that in there, too, for that, that paper trail to go through. So our hope is the new Skyward and the, like, adding position numbers to all of that will severely, significantly, I'm sorry, limit all of those moving pieces that we have to do manually through spreadsheets, because we're not a small district anymore. And that will help us then be able to do those quick reports of saying, okay, where are we at? What does a snapshot look like? Because right now, it's, it's in multiple different spots. Thank you.
And then on the budget side, as we have a position number, we can track that position number to a budget. Whereas right now, it's just like, well, there's twenty math teachers, or how many of them do we need budget for, and how many are new or retiring? And just get, again, with the manual process, there's just a lot of room for error. So I think as we go forward, we can say this position number has this budget to it, and it's going to be much easier.
Do we have where, whether it be in HR or through teaching and learning, that it, that we have, each building has this amount of teachers, this amount of support staff? We, that's something that we do track, and that's available. Like, because I think that kind of information is what I'm seeking for, and if I, if I'm just missing, not finding it myself, if that makes sense?
We could definitely get you what's been budgeted, but what's actually on-site is a different story, and that's what the moving pieces are really hard to track down. So I can tell you, we'll just keep going with the math example. I can tell you, maybe at the high school, there's five math positions that are budgeted for, but we may only have four, because we haven't been able to fill that fifth one.
Sure.
And I think that's a really important data to know, is that fifth one that we haven't been able to fill.
Yes.
So we can, we do have the reports available to say, we have an approved budget for five positions. What's really difficult is to show where all those moving pieces are. Not as much with the certified staffing, because it isn't as flux or influx as the other positions, but the non-certified staffing is very difficult to track.
I appreciate that, because the snapshot, or, you know, just trying to get a grasp of, I mean, the staffing is, that position piece is a, I know it's a daily challenge, a daily, something that we all are dealing with on the daily, being able to understand how that ebbs and flows as a director and, and how that connects, I mean, it connects to everything. It connects to our students', you know, achievement. It, it connects to the budget. It connects to so many things. So having a broader picture of that, for me, just would be so helpful. So I appreciate your work toward that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, now, we talked about this at the Finance Committee, too, about that portion being at the public-facing dashboard. So once that gets solidified, the general public will be able to go into any department or into any school and see the budgeted aspect.
Right.
The building aspect might look different, and that's more of what we're trying to do with the upgrade of Skyward.
Yeah.
But that budgeted aspect will be very public-facing. Anybody for any expense will be able to see what constitutes our bottom line at a building, at a department, at, at a district level.
That's, that'll be wonderful. Thank you. Just to clarify, too, that's going to show allocated staff, and staff doesn't stay at one particular site, and they move. They school psychologists, some nurses go back and forth, stuff like that, they share different sites.
It'd be FTE-based, it wouldn't be head account-based?
So it might be point two here, point eight there.
So it won't be like one here, one there?
Right.
It will be that way.
A true allocation. Any other questions regarding the preliminary budget?
One for me. Thank you for all that information.
Tammy, that was excellent. Yeah. Thank you.
Let me know if there's other information you'd like to see before this board meeting.
Because the intent is, we'll be approving it at the next meeting.
Yeah, June twelfth, unless pending anything vastly changing at the legislature, what you see here today is what we'll be bringing forth for a final vote on June twelfth.
The only thing that I think would be really helpful, and I know I've been pretty vocal about this, is really understanding the results, the detailed results of the STUDER survey, particularly when it comes to teacher satisfaction. Because I just want to make sure that, with the investments that we're making, that we're meeting the needs of the teachers. And that, that information will be incredibly helpful for us as a board to understand how to prioritize the asks on the investments.
Yeah, and just to share with the whole board, you know, when STUDER was here several weeks ago, presenting the findings, we'll be coming back to the board with summaries of that information. We are also going through, just, just completed our first run of about, I don't know, six thousand or so itemized pieces, but we're also going through that with our principals. So there's a lot of work still going on as principals are planning with their school improvement plans, that are looking at it very differently. But we will have that aggregate theme coming back to the board, as we shared a few weeks ago. And then we'll have the redaction process that we're going through internally. We're, that's something that we're still working on for our, for our internal purposes. But we'll have that for your information as a board, too.
And the timing on that? We need to talk about that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need to talk about that, and we, we should be talking about that later on. But when, STUDER did say they were going to come back sometime over the summer, right? Or is that?
Well, we'll, we'll be coming back over the summer.
Okay.
STUDER may be part of that conversation, but we'll, we are coming back with the aggregate themes for the board that I shared that, that evening.
Right, because there's a lot of information to assimilate and, and then get the feedback from, from the teachers and stuff. And that will come out with pattern-based themes and, and results of.
So that's actually what we're doing right now. So we're, the, 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 it's very cumbersome, you know? There's a lot of information there. There's a lot of personal information in, in this data set. And it's, it's an iterative process, so there's context that goes on. I can look at a comment on paper, and just talking with the principal today, saying, okay, hey, I saw these two things.
Right.
Tell me a little bit more about what's happening here. Like, is there something? Like, is there something I need to know? Is there something you need from me? Is, you know, some context is very explicit, you know? So we're trying to make meaning, so that co-interpretation process that Jenny Zambusch talked about, we're trying to make meaning of even the qualitative statements. There's a story behind that. So we, and that's what we're doing with our principals. And so I know when you had initially asked for that, when I talked about July, because this is our exit for our principals right now, and they're building leadership teams as they're going through their own building-level data, having discussions as a bill, having discussions as departments, grade levels, to make meaning of that as they're formulating and finalizing their school improvement plans for next year. So all of my exit interviews with principals for their end-of-year evaluation is also doing a final run on their numbers. So it's not, not that we're not wanting to get to this work, but the lift of this is huge because this is our first time with STUDER. And if you use data appropriately, again, it doesn't give you the answers, it just allows you to ask some better questions to get a deeper understanding of what the needs are. So we'll be giving that to you, you know, in a executive report of, here are the key themes that we heard from, you know, high school. Here's what we heard from our middle schools, here's what we heard from our elementary schools. And then we do have, you know, the raw, uncut data set that we have to, you know, should anybody want to see that? It would have to be redacted. So if you recall, one STUDER question specifically asked, is there anyone you would like to mention? I mean, that whole entire section basically is, I mean, that could just give you a blank piece of paper because there's names go over in there, and we can't release that per se. So that's what we're going through right now. So I know that July, that's why I mentioned July, because we're closing out with a lot of this. But we believe we'll be able to get a lot more of this data complete, you know, as we go through the redaction process.
How much does STUDER, oh, sorry. How much does STUDER compile for you? Because it feels like there's so much.
They can do some of the compilations, but they can't do any redactions.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question there is, if I'm filling out that survey, my expectation would be that that is private and used for only certain things. And unless that was stated clearly at the time I was completing the survey, I would think there'd be a broad understanding of why it's important to keep that data somewhat private. And you've done the right fashion. I might be wrong, I just don't know.
No, and that actually asks, kind of plays off of my next question, is like, when, I know when I completed the survey, there was no, how do I say? I think it was, does your kid go to high school, elementary, or middle school? There was no building-specific information, unless it was different for the teachers than it was for the general community.
Staff has different, staff have different questions that were being asked. And even in parent survey data, they are putting, there are student names, there are staff names. It all depends on how parents fill it out, it varies.
It's just, I know it's our most important survey that we do annually, every year. There's a reason people put comments in it because they want to make sure that their voices are heard as we're going through this budget process, which is why I asked for it back in April. And I think it's really important to have it before we finalize our budget, so.
It is the goals for next year, but I want to reiterate what Julie just said because we do tell people it's going to be confidential. Unfortunately, parents do put kids' names in there and stuff like that. So before the information is shared, as well as staff puts specific things in there, we got to make sure. But there's, were thousands of comments, right? And some people put their names on, some people didn't. And if we're going to maintain the integrity and fidelity of this, we have to encourage as many people as possible to take it because that will give us the best information.
Yeah, we had a great turnout, a great hit rate on that.
Yeah, and we like to continue that hit rate and create more and not, you know, and encourage people to take it so we do get that information. If they know their information is going to be released in a way that is not confidential, that is not going to encourage engagement, that's the first thing. And second of all, you have to be careful, there is, I mean, how many, six, 7,000 comments?
There's a lot.
Yeah, that takes time.
We'll think of redacting.
Yeah, I appreciate the diligence that's going on. And I, and the only thing that I would be curious about is after they, after you guys, after STUDER finishes their job and you finish your job, there were ratings and marked for improvements in areas we did well. After they review the qualitative statements and comments and get the feedback, is there a possibility that some of, some of those little green-yellow buttons, et cetera, may change based upon interpretation?
No, they wouldn't change. The qualitative comments are just context for the quantitative. It helps you understand why this rating might be where it's at quantitatively. So that's where you, so they, you know, again, when STUDER shared this information with us, we kind of trained our learning leaders teams, you know, natural human instinct is, okay, where's my name? And how many dollars do I have my back, right? So they're like, don't go there. Look at your data, your quantitative data first. And then where you see opportunities of, hey, this isn't making sense, now go to the qualitative data set to look for comments that speak to maybe this particular quantitative rating. So you can understand maybe what staff or parents were saying about that particular rating scale. That will then tell you, oh, this is what our community is looking for. Or this is what the staff were saying when this score came up. This is why we're kind of at a miss, or this is why we're excelling because this is going so well, you know? So that's what the context or qualitative is for. It will not change the quantitative measurements.
Hey, I'm going to go back to something that Jess said when we first got the STUDER survey, and she asked about definitions. Is it possible that when you go through the qualitative piece, that it turned out that people defined the question differently than what we anticipated?
I will say that that is, that's always going to be the case. I, I mean, we all could take the same survey and interpret one word differently, you know, 10 different ways or whatever. So when I looked at, and I looked at thousands of these comments, you can see the same response, or the same question elicit very different responses from a qualitative standpoint based upon your experience at the school or your experience within the district. Like one individual staff member, for example, gave context to say, because I'm split between two different buildings, it's hard for me to talk about. You're supposed to think about your reporting structure. So they bypassed the two principals and went more towards the department that supervises the principals. The next person might not do that. They're talking about the principal, you know, in their case. So, yeah, it fluctuates significantly, and you can see that in the comments.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments as it relates to the budget?
I just want to thank everybody for the talent they're putting into this because this is, this is a lot. And I think we may have a few fewer students, but the needs are increased. And I think this budget helps identify those and fund those. That's so important, so I wanted to put that out there, that, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to our review of facilities fees. District Facilities Coordinator Gina Fern, yes. No board action, just a minute.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I'm Gina Fern, Facilities Coordinator. It is my responsibility to schedule all the buildings and work with our community at large. Every year, I pull our area district fees and compare what we currently charge with the area districts. Couple of weeks ago, I met with Joel Dahl, the Director of Community Ed, my boss, and kind of went through fees compared to everybody else. And at this time, we're not recommending an across-the-board raise of fees, but there were a couple of things that we noticed that we wanted to bring forward. There were a couple you had included in your packet. One of the things we wanted to look at is a permit fee. What a permit fee is, is basically anybody that comes in, turns in a request to use the facility. So we would be charging them a $15 permit fee. And this is kind of to help recoup the administrative fees or administrative work that goes into these permits. Because once they turn in the permit, it doesn't just end at that. There's still communication, there's still, you know, can be changes, there can be moving, there can be setups, different things that are part of it. For some of our bigger user groups, we were looking at possibly doing an option. So you'd either pay a per-permit fee or if you do like 10 permits a year, you could pay a $70 one-time-year fee for that permit. I did pull 20 districts, similar size, a lot of our local, including Burnsville, Shakopee, Apple Valley, Rosemont, Eastern Carver and some of those. And out of 20 districts, 16 districts do currently do permit fees. The other part that we wanted to bring forward, I've been looking at turf rates. When we initially brought turf into the district, some of the review we did was also comparing it to the Savage Dome. And we kind of wanted to be in line with that. Obviously now, however many years later, there's a lot more districts with fees related to turf. So I did pull a comparison, and as you can see, we are a little higher than some of the area districts. So one of the things that Joel and I talked about was keeping our 16-hour rate, but having it be for games. And then having a secondary rate that was for practices. And one of the thoughts we had behind that was, obviously, at games, you have a lot of spectators, you have a lot more chances of kids', you know, supervisory needs. That part where practice is pretty minimal, it's just kids using the space. And you don't have all those other elements that can bring in more costs for maintaining or supervising that. So those are the two that we would like to bring forward. Did you guys have any questions on it offhand?
I do have one.
Sure.
Something I heard you mention that I didn't see here, the rates are per hour?
Yes, yep.
I've got another question. Because we are at the high end, do we, do we still have, like, do you have an idea of comparison in terms of usage? Like, is it turning people away?
We have actually, right now, the turf is, it's really heavily booked. When we get into summer, it slows down a little bit more. It just depends on, you know, we still have some of that. But I think adding that practice level in, it is probably more used for games right now. But I think if we added that practice level in, we could probably bring in even more use on those fields in the summertime.
Who would be the ones, who would be advertising this to?
This is basically, so are you talking the turf port or which part?
Yeah, like outside of our district, the, you know, our sports activities that we have, whether it be community ed, I know we.
We, well, we have a lot of associate, right now, obviously, we have our local soccer, youth soccer association. We have our youth soccer, or I mean, youth lacrosse, which is part of PLA Y. PLA Y has football, they have a lot of different things that would utilize that space as well. We do have some area, I don't know if you want to call them all-star or all metro teams that some of the, I know, high school coaches are involved in that, are second season, that will come in and use that space as well.
I'm just curious if, like, kind of moving back on what Amy said, the, are people not using it because of our fee being higher? Would they go to a neighboring district or somewhere else? I'm just curious.
I think they don't go to a separate district, I think they just tend to use our grass more.
Oh, okay, I understand, rather than the turf.
Yes.
Okay, I was just trying, I missed that. But do you anticipate a potential slight change with the lower on the, right on the, it'll be interesting to see how this plays out.
Yeah, so I think it'll, it'd probably, it'll probably bring in more use. We don't have a lot of extra use, you know? Like I said, summertime is probably when we'll see that pick up a lot more. Because it'll, and it'll give some breaks to our grass. It'll give us some resting period and get more turf use. And then it'll, obviously, it'll bring in a little extra revenue on that ad too.
Well, a question with, so with other districts, I always found it interesting when I moved to Fairluk Savage, how we have PLA Y sports outside of the school district, which I think is great. But I believe other districts have it as part of their district. So would they be charged the same fees if it was part of the district, as part of the sports program within the district?
So our, like, community ed, if community ed offers a youth camp or something on turf, they're considered priority one. So anything, whether it's high school activities or that is priority one. Our local youth associations, so like PLA Y's sports, they are considered priority two. So if there's, say Shakopee comes in and they want to use our facilities, well, that's outside of district. So they would actually be on a priority four versus, so we give preferential treatment to our youth sports and our school programs. They get the first priority for use.
Going back to what Amy said again, down there where you described priority two, priority three, priority four for both youth association, park and rec and all that, do we, do you have any idea the percentages other than the, obviously PLA Y during the summer uses it?
You know what, the probably, I mean, between high school and our, our district is very, very heavily used by our district. I mean, it's our community that's using it. We do not have a ton of outside groups coming in to use our facilities because we are pretty heavily booked. We have, our kids are very active, our, whether it's high school or elementary school kids. And so we do, most of the groups I work with are local. We occasionally will have, like I said, an all-metro type thing come in and use the space. But there's, it's always worked out where there's a little room for everybody, so.
I personally love it, thank you Gina, I think that's a great idea.
I love the fact that we're going to encourage more practices on the turf by lowering the rates and having more flat fees, so thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the review of resolutions and allocation report for LTFM and Southwest Metro. These are for review only, and the approval of these will take place at our next board meeting. So Director Frederiksen and Director Dowell can guide us through this.
Thank you. So Southwest Metro is a cooperative that we are a member of. And as such, they do not get revenue the same way that school districts do. So the member districts essentially have to give dollars, in this case, LTFM and the Safe School Levy. There is a document that shows the percentage that the Southwest Metro has calculated that we use for each of the different categories. And then they have the resolution that they, we're going to ask you to approve at the next board meeting.
Amy, the only question I have is, I know we do an LTFM levy just about every year and all that for the Southwest Metro. Do we, and maybe I missed it here, but do we, oh, there is a comparison, I must have totally missed it. Sorry about that. So we did go up?
Yes, and they, they're actually building a new school in Eastern, elementary school in Eastern Carver County. So they're going to have some increased cost, which they'll pass on to all of their member districts. That's the main reason why the cost went up this year for next year.
And Ricky, do they still have the thing in the Shakopee Mall there off of Marystown Road?
No.
They moved all of that when they got the new building down to 169?
That's in Dean Lakes, at the Dean Lakes Education Center.
So that did get consolidated.
And adding the elementary site will be and older Eastern Carver County Elementary. And they'll be heading, the elementary site will be in older Eastern Carver County Elementary, so that's where those costs will be coming in. And some of the reasons why you see the change in our percentage usage, some of the other districts went down, which means we carry a larger share.
And I know at the last board meeting, I was the superintendent rep at that one, and there is consensus with the sitting districts to slow the growth of Southwest Metro. Purchasing this new property was a little, I wouldn't say counter, but there's a lot of conversation about it. And I, I think the superintendents were really pushing Darren to just end the board, to just say, let's, let's service those who are committed, fully enrolled in Southwest Metro versus trying to expand. There's a, there's about a handful, I don't know, about five other districts that they could pull into the co-op right now, and there's commitment from Southwest Metro to kind of steady the growth, to let this kind of materialize, and then let's see what the demand is. Serve those that you have in your aspects now, so we don't want to get ourselves, for example, you know, I think Darren had talked about, you know, it takes them about two weeks sometimes to enroll a kid. Well, that's too long. It's a year in another neighboring co-op. That's how backed up they are, and we don't want to get ourselves, find ourselves there. So they're kind of pumping the brakes a little bit, minus this new demand for the elementary level five placement, but...
I think the problem is they're so spread out.
Yeah, we, we do have a large catchment area that goes all the way out to Buffalo, you know, and down to farming, you know, yeah, new, yeah.
So you need things that are local in different areas, especially once that higher utilization, no, I get it. I get it. And I think Darren's doing an excellent job.
Yep. Anything else from the board on this?
Ari, I just missed it. Who's building a new school, which district?
This is Southwest Metro Intermediate District, and so they're, they're taking over and remodeling a, an older school in Eastern Carver County schools that's been sitting kind of mothballed for a while.
Okay, thank you, I missed the name, appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. We will move on to draft Board Committee charters. So our board committees, Finance, Policy, and Teaching and Learning are coming forward with their charters for annual, well, this would be the first initial annual review. And we've got Director Fredrickson for Finance, Director Herman for Policy, and Director Edwards for Teaching and Learning to walk us through these. And again, these will be loaded on into...
I can start with the Finance Advisory Committee. This is actually the second year for the District Committee's Advisory Committee. We've already met three times this year, and then we are meeting again June first to kind of roll out the Qualtrics dashboard, the front-facing dashboard. And then we have, our dates already set up for next year. We did add two new members at our last meeting, and we have new board members joining us. We've actually had fairly good turnout. We have several committee members that have been attending every one of the meetings, so we're pleased about the group that we have, and they've been very, very helpful.
So are there any questions for Tammy around the language in the charter, membership, things like that? Granted, this one's been in place, so it's probably the easiest to review. And then, it's my understanding, rosters would be updated in, in the fall, August?
August, we'll come back with the rosters for all the board committees to acknowledge and approve.
I have a couple of questions. Do we, one question, do we cap, or should we, do we cap membership in this committee? And then Finance experience, excuse me, Finance experience, like, do we define that? What does Finance experience mean? Not necessarily to put it in here, I don't think, but I'm just kind of curious, or maybe if you put it in here.
Sure. For the Finance Committee, we actually had an application process. They sent a resume, and we narrowed it down based on individuals that had either financial background, or budgeting, or full, so it was very selective. They do have at least some, well, many of them, quite a bit of, of finance background, so it's been very helpful. We haven't capped it, we did add two new members this year, just, I think we had a lot of things that were kind of hanging out there to talk about, and we felt like we wanted to have a couple other, we have somebody that owns their own consulting firm for enrollment. But part of the Finance Advisory Committee used to be kind of the Finance Operations
Long-term Facilities and Finance. It was all combined.
And we kind of did away with that, combined it with the Finance Advisory Committee, so we wanted some more operations background in the group, which is why we opened it up for two more. Thank you.
I have a question, Tammy. If there are people that are on a committee and they don't attend meetings, we have a, we have guidelines on, like, you missed so many, we're gonna open the space up for someone else, that's...
We actually have had that this year. We have one person who has missed the last couple meetings, and we sent them an email and said, are you still interested? Or is this something that you're not gonna find time for? And they said they just would still like to be involved, but it just hadn't worked out for the last two meetings. So again, we'll monitor it, and if they are virtually not there, then, then we will certainly look to replace that seat.
I appreciate that.
Tammy, well, you've been a model for this committee, and I know the committee has been helpful for, not only to you, but also as a board member as well. My question is, is when you are looking at applications, well, two questions. One, how do you advertise for these positions when they come up for, for new positions? That's my first question, is how do you advertise? Because I know a lot of people aren't on social media, so that's why I'm trying to understand how we advertise for these positions.
That's Kristina.
So for the, for the Finance Advisory, we've done that in a few ways. We've done an email lister that went out to parents throughout E-12, who was in Laker Connections, and then we did a post on social media as well, so.
Did you choose something? You did something on our website?
Website was there too, yeah. We linked all the communication back to that website with more information, so.
Just wondering if we can put something in the local paper as well? I just know there's a lot of people in town that, okay, yeah, because that's another great way to advertise as well. Let's have your piece, sir. Okay, thank you. And then as you're vetting applicants for this, I'm assuming with Finance particularly, taking into consideration any conflict of interest with anyone who might have ties to the district, if they are to, like, if we are to be buying a service from their company, then they would not qualify in full transparency?
Yeah, it's my understanding that was, because there, I know, as I reviewed, again, the committee was formed before I got here, but I did review all of the applications, and there was one that, that was eliminated because of that, yes.
It was on the original application process last year also, that conflict of interest disclosure.
All right, more questions for Tammy to move on to the Policy Advisory Charter. Emily can speak to that some. I know you, you did some work on this with our new Policy Advisory Committee. I know in the past, we had at one time a Policy Advisory Committee, then it came to the board for many, many reads, and now we're going back to the original format, hopefully an enhanced version. Any questions regarding that charter?
I had a question about the membership and the selecting of, so for teachers and building and staff, it says two. And so in order to represent elementary, middle, and high school, I'm just wondering, the number two. I mean, I'm happy to see that there's a larger number of community members, because policy, you know, has a huge impact on our district as well, you know, as a community, but I'm just wondering with the teachers and the building staff, if there'll be, you know, representation from all levels in our district?
That's a great question, something we can definitely look into consider, consideration. The, the rationale for the two was to provide representation. A lot of our employee groups have unit representation that represents all of their members across all of the levels, so being able to, to bring them in also while being very cognizant of the fact that we have had a lot of leaves and sub issues, so pulling too many out to come to meetings like this, we just wanted to be very cognizant about that as well. So we tried to strike a balance with, with those two things, understanding that they do have representation that's, that represents a diverse membership in their employee groups, and balancing not pulling too many staff out.
Well, I think the diverse viewpoints is really important. So if someone is a member of, like, say, the Finance Committee, can they also be a member of the Policy Committee, as well as the Equity and Advisory Committee, and the Teaching and Learning Committee? Because currently, it seems like the committees that I attend, there's a lot of the same faces in there, and maybe that's the only people that stepped up to be part of those committees, but I'm just wondering, like, is there something with all the committees in total, that if you serve on one, that you can't really serve on another?
Are you, are you specific to community members or staff?
Both.
I believe what we see is duplicates of administrative people showing up, not necessarily teachers and staff, so that's been my experience, but I can't imagine if they're already having a problem meeting the regular committees, that they would be staff member, you know, that you staff members or like, teachers?
If you know from like the, the unit representation, for example, there are specific individuals who represent their employee groups, and they typically tend to be the ones that have, have the availability to attend the meetings. And then to your point too, with administration, you know, there's only a slot for you to pull from, so they sometimes do have to repeat from, from each other. It's not something that, that I've discussed on whether or not we would limit community members or not. I think that would be something we would take into consideration in the process, how many people did show interest, how can we balance that out so we don't have everybody the same on all three? I, I think we're gonna have to, to look at that a little bit deeper once we know who all shows interest.
Yeah, I don't know of anybody on Finance that's on any other committee. I can speak pretty clearly on that one.
Yeah, and that one I'm not aware of, but on the teaching and learning curriculum, and then the Equity and Advisory Committee, there's, there's a handful of the same people.
There's nothing that precludes that, I mean, there's nothing written in any of these board committees that precludes a community member or a staff member not to be on a Finance and a Teaching and Learning. Again, I think to Emily's point, I think we want to have diverse perspectives, we want to have balanced perspectives, we want pushing and pulling, no matter what the committee is, board sanctioned or staff sanctioned. We, we try to get, you know, out of echo chambers to get the best results, you know, for whatever our charge is, so.
I, I just have a general question, the applications that are going out...